All right, we'd like to call this meeting to order. We welcome you all here this morning. This is October 8th, Tuesday, at 10:07. We're seven minutes late this morning. Normally, we start around the Monday or real close to it, and we're a little late. We apologize for that. We're in the middle of our budget hearings, and we've got stuff going. You look at our calendars. My wife looked at mine the other day, and it's just meeting after meeting all day long. She says, "How do you do that?" And it's like, well, it takes everything we can do to keep on time, doesn't it?
It does.
It's tough. All right, our invocation this morning will be given by Shaun Wilkinson, our Pledge of Allegiance by Shelley Howsey, and our Thought of the Day by Commissioner Harvey. And we'll go to that point. Shaun?
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to come before you this morning. We're grateful for the beauty that surrounds us and for this wonderful place that we live, and for the good things that happen here. We pray that each of us may do our part to continue those good things. We pray that we can be people of integrity and kindness, and that through doing this, good things will continue to take place in our community. We pray for those who lead us, and ask that we can, again, do our part to continue doing things that will benefit those around us. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) (inaudible)
(inaudible)
As I think about something as simple as our commission agenda today, it gives me a great depth of satisfaction to know that it's a collection of many different items as a result of people who care, whether you care about broadcasting to a valley, dividing up a parcel, communicating the great tourist area that we enjoy, or maintaining a variety of facilities, or just communicating in general. Today's agenda consists of a whole bunch of different people from a different part of, or a different background, who care. So often, we've heard the statistic that Weber County does more volunteer hours per capita than almost anywhere else in the nation, right here in our little area of just about 250,000 people. It's because we care. We've had wonderful examples, wonderful examples of people who pioneered this for us for years and years, and many have passed that torch on to their kids, and many have learned from the examples of great others. It's, to you commissioners and to you, audience, it's with a deep gratitude that I feel for being able to represent where we do. It's with a deep gratitude that I get to see firsthand things about transfer stations and about water that's not contained and needs to be mitigated, stormwater, or even indigent burials. The variety of different things that we get to learn and grow is wonderful, and I'm grateful at this time of my life that I have that privilege. And so, those are my thoughts today.
Wonderful thoughts. Commissioner Harfield, that's wonderful. Thank you very much for that Thought of the Day. You know, it's interesting, we canceled last week's meeting. I was gonna be out of town, and you two had meetings all over the place. So, there's been a big change in the last two weeks. Outside, you go outside, it was summer last time we met, and it's fall now. You can feel it in the air. The weather's changed, it's cooled down, the leaves have changed. They showed some pictures on the news last night of the leaves up at Snow Basin and how they've changed. You can see that right out your side window, can't you?
Yeah.
The house?
Every night.
Yeah, every night. That's right, every night. We'll be skiing before you know it.
We can really hope.
Yeah, isn't that the truth? All right, we will now go to public comment. If there's those who've come to comment about something that's not on the agenda, something else, please stand up right now, and you've got three minutes, and we'd love to hear from you. State your name and where you're from, please.
My name's Amy O'Kesey, and I'm at the Lantern House.
Glad to have you here today.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate your courage.
I'm a domestic violence survivor, a single mother of mine, and I'm here today to ask what my city is doing to help families out of homelessness. The Lantern House unfortunately has been more troubling for my family than lending a helping hand. I've been punished, degraded, belittled, discriminated against by security at the Lantern House. We are there, a large number of homeless people are not getting services and help they need, and they are being turned away daily by the Lantern House due to not enough space. How does this help homelessness rare? Make the shelter more accessible to those who are struggling, make the buildings bigger, offer more help to large families who can find a place to live and are forced to remain on the streets. I can't find housing that will house my large family and that is affordable due to... Sorry. Do we continue living like this? What can I look forward to? Lantern House has given us a roof over our heads but have yet to experience their mission statement they follow. I have seen families come and receive all the help they need to be housed and moved out of the shelter. Families get their rent paid for a whole year. Where's the helping hand up? The barriers that large families face, such as mine, is concerning due to the fact that the housing for us is impossible. It is not available. The law is two people per bedroom with housing authority and only two to three bedrooms and just a few four bedrooms, which are really very rarely available. Four bedrooms are not common nor in our price range. I'm here today to share my struggle, the fight that I am trying to fight. The environment at the Lantern House has to change. It has, it has to help, they're trying to provide. I feel that they're failing that. I'm tired of being treated unfairly. You have a homeless shelter, the Lantern House, in your city that chooses when it is convenient, and they sit on their hands for 90 days and simply force large families to look for housing that will never accept us. I'm tired of being punished for my situation. What change can I hope for? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amy. We appreciate that, and we'll look into that. So, you know, the Lantern House, right now, normally, this is the down season for them during the summer and the fall, and we're experiencing record homelessness right now, one because of the price of affordable housing, which you mentioned, the other is the fact that this Real Grand Project in Salt Lake is forcing people north, and so, we're trying to deal with that right now. So, we will certainly check into the Lantern House and see what they're doing. But the Weber Housing Authority, have you been in touch with them? You have, because they're the people for really the next step to help you locate housing. Andy Beatles?
I don't know.
You haven't talked to her? All right, well, I'd recommend you get ahold of her, Andy Beatles, and if you talk to the gals in the back back there, they'll give you Andy's phone number, right there. You see Melissa's hand go up? She'll give you her phone number, okay? Thank you very much for showing the strength and courage to come out today and talk to us. We appreciate that. Others who've come to speak to us today. All right, we see no hands, so we'll go ahead and go from there. First item on our agenda today are some presentations, and I'm gonna move one up in front because it's a real quick one. Number eight on our action items. Shaun, we're gonna go to you and have Richard Mendez come up with you. Menzies, I'm sorry. Sorry, Richard, and talk about number eight.
Thank you, commissioners. This item is a request for approval of a lease agreement between Weber County and the Ogden Valley Recreation Transmission Special Service District. This district provides television signal to the Ogden Valley, and they've been in existence for several years. Richard has now been appointed as the chair of that board, and he has been working with us for the last several months to get this agreement in place. And essentially, what it says is the county will lease space on our tower and a ground lease for a building and equipment to the special service district so that they can continue to broadcast that television signal, and they will pay 33% of the monthly utility costs. And that is the agreement that you have before you. The sheriff's office also uses this radio tower site, and the county helps maintain it. So, we're just, we're happy that we were able to come to this agreement. I'd like to thank John Bond and Brian Barron and Bill Ross and Bryce Taylor and everybody else who has played a role in helping this along, and we're ready for this agreement to be approved.
Thank you. Richard, we'd like to hear from you as the other party, chairman of that board.
Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity for saying a few words here. Before we vote on the resolution, which I obviously urge you to approve, I would like to take a couple of minutes just to explain what the district does and to also add my thanks, as Shaun has said, to John, Shaun, and his team, and this is not the Oscars, but everybody knows who they are, and I really appreciate them. So, what does the district do? First of all, I suspect we must be one of the smallest special districts in Utah, but surely we must have one of the longest names, and it's the Weber County Ogden Valley Recreation Transmission Special Service District. And I must admit, every time I open a board meeting and have to read that name into the minutes, I do silently curse the person who came up with it. So, with a name like that, it's probably no wonder that people don't really understand what we do, and the mission is very simple. We're trying to provide over-the-air TV to the residents of Ogden Valley. And this is not the noisy signal of our youth covered in sort of white noise and what have you, but rather, it's a high-definition signal that provides an image that is as sharp or sharper than any cable or satellite service. We transmit 26 channels, all the major channels, ABC, NBC, PBS, CBS, and what have you, and all the other sub-channels that these companies provide, like CW and ION and BYU and what have you. And importantly, over-the-air signals are not subject to any business disputes like we've had between DirecTV and digital and what have you and Channels 4 and 5, so those have always been available to us. And all valley residents need to take advantage of this service is just a $30 antenna that you can buy from Amazon or anywhere. And if you compare that to the package from a satellite or a digital of the order of at least $100 a month, so it's $1,000 to $1,500 bucks a year, it's not really surprising that people are cutting the cord. And Nielsen reports that nationwide, we've got 15% of households that cut the cord, and interestingly, Utah, Deseret News reports, is up at around 20%. Now, these people also subscribe to an internet service such as Hulu or Netflix or whatever, and this is all being led by the millennials. And personally, this is something I've done for the last 15 years, which obviously qualifies me for a leading-edge millennial. But, you know, I've got a DVR that I can record TV, and I've got my Netflix and what have you. So quickly, the history was, as Shaun said, back in the late '80s, early '90s, the TV signals in the valley were just terrible because we couldn't receive signals from Salt Lake City because of the mountains. So, a group of citizens came and worked with the commissioners at that time, put up an antenna just above Eden, and since that time, so for the last, what, 30-odd years, volunteers have maintained that. It's been thousands of hours of volunteer, volunteer hours a year. And where we're going in the future, we've recently spent a lot of time and energy switching from microwave signal that came down from Farmington and then Mount Ogden and what have you, and now we have a fiber optic, so the signal is better, it's more reliable. But unfortunately, all our equipment is 20 years old, beginning to reach the end of its natural life, and we're storing it in a leaky shipping container. So, you know, water coming in and electronics, not a good mix. So, over the next few years, we're gonna be erecting a building up there, switching to new equipment, and so, in conclusion, I'd like to thank everybody for supporting this and coming to this agreement. I think it's terrific, and I look forward to many more years of sustainable and reliable over-the-air TV in Weber County's Ogden Valley. Thank you very much indeed, gentlemen.
Thank you, Richard, and thank you, Shaun. So, commissioners, this is an action item. I'm open for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve with a comment, if I might.
Yes, please.
I just want to give thanks to both John Bond and Richard for really taking, taking the helm on this issue in Ogden Valley. It's a needed service in the valley by many people. Believe it or not, when I grew up in the valley, I remember having TV at one time. Of course, that was always, it was black and white, and I remember there was more snow on it than a picture, but this is a significant step forward to what we have today, and I know the people in the valley appreciate it. Richard, you've done a great job of bringing that board together, and I appreciate the work of Shaun and his team in making sure that we have this needed service because, as Richard has said, more and more people are cutting the cord. This gives them the ability to have a cost-effective way to kind of stay in touch with current events. That's my motion, Mr. Chair.
Very good.
Second?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's approved. So, Commissioner Fror, that shows how old you are.
Well, I can't, I can't hide it, but my grandpa used to tell me, you know, if you have time to watch TV, then you have time to be out working, so since you can't see the TV, let's go to work.
You know, Richard?
Which he was probably right.
I think it was John Bond that named that.
Oh, right. Thank you for that. I'll take care of that later.
Yeah, I'll take care of that later. You know, it was interesting, you mentioned that, and I, as a young kid, I actually remember when my dad brought a TV home for the first time, it was like, oh my gosh, what is this?
You're showing your age, too.
That's right. I'm older than you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, that's true. All right, well, to return back to the agenda then and go to F for Presentations. Report on the sesquicentennial celebration of the Transcontinental Railroad, presenters Kim Bouchard and Sarah Tolliver.
Kim Boucher.
Oh, Boucher, I seen, yeah, I seen the other Kim there, and I thought she was coming up. I apologize.
I did, too.
Good to have you here today.
This is one event that Kim Boucher got to be a support on and not a planner of, so unusual, I know. As you know, I'm Sarah Tolliver with Visit Ogden, and this is Kim Boucher with the Ogden Downtown Alliance, and I also want to take an opportunity to recognize my people. We've got our, the heads of our planning committee here with us in the audience today. So, the Union Station team of Damon Burnham and Holly Andrew, the Ogden City Special Events team of Kristy McBride and Ashley Bachwald, and then Kim's also Ogden Downtown Alliance, Jessica McCowen. So, thank them, I want to thank them for being here. I wanted to start today by saying, I know this event feels like it was a lifetime ago for some of us. It took a lifetime to make come to fruition. We took so long to come to you with this final wrap-up post-event report because we wanted to make sure we had all of the data that we could have available by the time we presented it. So, at Visit Ogden, we subscribe to a number of reports that give us access to visitor spending and those types of things, but some of them are only reported on quarterly, so we had to wait till the end of the second quarter in order to get that information. So, thank you for having us today and letting us relive this moment in our past. When the sesquicentennial event started, a lot of you know, it came to us as really just an effort to support the Union Pacific and the Spike 150 State Commission in the STEAM meet. It quickly became apparent to us as a community that if we wanted to really showcase our community and have the opportunity to keep people here a little longer, we needed to do more than just support the efforts of Spike 150 and UP. The numbers that Union Pacific were talking about coming to the STEAM meet, we knew the site wouldn't be able to handle all alone, and again, obviously, just wanted to make sure people had the, thank you, the opportunity to really explore and experience our community. The other thing that we quickly found out is that there were a number of various entities who were planning events in association with the sesquicentennial celebration, and we wanted to make sure there was some collaboration and joint communication that was going out of everything happening in our community as well as up in Box Elder County. This is a quick overview of all of the different entities that were involved from a Weber County perspective in the various levels of planning of this event or the various initiatives that happened. As we move into planning, just as a reminder, we celebrated three days of events. You know, a lot of our events take place on a partial part of a Saturday, three 12-hour days made for three very long event days in our community. This STEAM meet, as I mentioned, happened on a Thursday morning, and there were some concerns around the scale of that and what the property could accommodate and how those people would be accommodated in our community. We wanted to make sure that any event we produced supported our local business. As you are well aware, the STEAM meet was south of Union Station, a little bit separated from Historic 25th Street or any of our other downtown assets, and we wanted to make sure there was a draw that brought people up to support those businesses. We also wanted to make sure we did a great job showcasing our community to our visitors, accommodating the public safety for all in attendance, and when the decision was made to close Wall Avenue to ensure the safety of those attending the STEAM meet, we knew that we needed to do something to bridge that very wide gap between Union Station and our downtown area. This brought on the addition of numerous additional programming elements, of which we'll get into, but we also wanted to make sure that we showcased our community in the best light for the long-term partnership of Union Pacific and everyone else involved. These are just some of the responsibilities I'll go through pretty quickly. Golden Spike Foundation, or otherwise known as Spike 150, and Union Pacific were involved in the STEAM meet, as well as the events happening up at Promontory Point Summit, Promontory Summit, excuse me, I've already forgotten my vernacular. And then, this was our local sesquicentennial committee, and as I mentioned, the lead organizations who were involved in planning the events happening in our community. As you can see here, we each took on various roles to make sure that the event came to fruition without a hitch. These are a lot of our supporting partners, whether they provide sponsorship or services. Weber County was obviously one of those. We want to thank you for your support. We had great assistance from Weber State, not only in financial support, but in helping us run shuttle systems from parking lots, and as you can see, all of the other entities there. My favorite slide. Okay, so, this just is one to show you, to demonstrate in a very brief way the levels of planning that took place here. We had maps, 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 and more maps, and this is only a fraction of all of those, just to demonstrate the planning. You know, a lot of people thinks events are fun, and they are, and we're glad that our community gets to come out and celebrate, but when you're talking about an event of this magnitude, the layers of planning and road closures and detours and everything else that come into play are obviously very extensive. As we, as Sarah mentioned, with the closure of Wall, we wanted to make sure, and part of the work that we do together between the Ogden Downtown Alliance and the city and Visit Ogden in general, is making sure that events and anything that we bring into the community is answering back to our local community. It isn't just about bringing people here or bringing a train event or anything else, that we're making sure that we're fundamentally answering to our citizens and our businesses who are already actively involved here. So, with that decision to close Wall, we recognize the need to support our businesses primarily on 25th Street, but also beyond, and so that meant that we needed active programming of that space in the street. We made a decision to close Historic 25th Street for the full three days of this weekend, which is really comprised of a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and this really ugly spreadsheet, which is actually gorgeous if you're in the land of spreadsheets, represents all of the planning involved in bringing three 12-hour days of programming to 25th Street and making sure that that answered to how we connect with the junction and shuttle service from throughout the community. This next slide is also, I think Sarah and I are showing you some of the behind-the-scenes because there was a lot of layers of planning involved in pulling off an event of this scale and ensuring that we had safety for everyone involved. This is a radio communications plan, just to give you a sense of scale. This is every radio that was on the street with our event team, but also indicates every radio that was in with the emergency comm center, which was made up of the FBI, Homeland Security, Ogden City Fire, police, et cetera. Union Pacific has their own security agency, so there was a lot of behind-the-scenes communication that was happening and being planned for. And so, that's a very boring side of event planning. This next side, Sarah and I took on a volunteer full-time position in securing funding for this. Sarah mentioned earlier that when we first said yes to working on this project, we thought it was in the role of support agency and that programming would be handled, and so, in a lot of ways, we felt like we were coming to the table a little bit late in terms of planning and securing funding for this massive event that we really had handed to us at this level. So, what you're seeing here is sort of our vision with this event and then the call for partners. Weber County was the first to say yes in supporting this event, and that actually opened the door for many other partners represented. And I'm sorry, this is small, but that orange band is everyone in the community who came to support financially and otherwise. Weber County was a huge contributor to us, and we really appreciate that. As we were getting ready for this event, we realized that we already had a ton of people coming into the community. We didn't feel that we really needed to market it so much as make sure that people understood how to traverse the area, how to get from the airport and our train services here, how to navigate the area, and also making sure that we were putting our downtown and Weber at large really in the spotlight in a well-presented way. What you see here is some of the art that we had commissioned, whether it was through our offices jointly or through the Ogden City Arts entity. These are, and you still see some of these throughout the community, that lower portion is a wrapped utility box. You see the poster design that we used is represented throughout downtown. We had banners and things with that art as well. That's a, all of those that are shown here are locally commissioned pieces of art and are things that are still in our community to this day. And as we went through this planning process, and it finally came, the event finally arrived, and it was one of those moments where, as many of you know, in some of those planning meetings, are these people really coming? Are this many people really gonna be here? And so, the moment of truth came, and we had a full street and a full downtown for those three days, starting with the STEAM meet on Thursday morning. One thing that I'm really proud of with this event, I think all of us are proud of, is we wanted to make sure that we were celebrating this point in time history of our railroad, but also that we were celebrating where we've come through.
but also that we were celebrating where we've come through and where we're going. And so with the programming of this space over the three days, we wanted to make sure that we were showcasing not only who has been here, but who is here now. The programming comprised of over 60 live performances and was representative of more than 30 cultures who are present in Weber County. There's some pictures of the street programming and we also worked with Holly and Union Station's team, who typically manages the Heritage Festival. Inside of Union Station alone, we merged our programming. So it was presented throughout, this is some programming inside of the station. And this upper right photo is actually one of the museum pieces from Union Pacific. Of course, all things are fun, but it's also great to look at the results and who was really here. So one of the things that Sarah and I feel like we're on tour right now is sharing a little bit of the numbers and feedback from our local businesses. And I'll let her talk you through some of that.
So as we mentioned, we can look at the data all day long, but as Kim mentioned, the impact to our community is what we are most, is the most important piece to us. So on this slide, you can see just a couple of comments that we gained from local businesses indicating that they had record-breaking days in sales. Restaurants on the street, the top one is an art gallery. One of those is a restaurant over in the junction. So the impact was felt throughout the community, not just on 25th Street. And we included that one on the bottom because we all know that nobody takes time to give you feedback unless it's negative. And we thought the fact that one of our attendees who bought merchandise in our merchandise tent actually took the time to comment in their Square app about how great the event was spoke volumes for us. This next slide is some of the participant feedback from those performances Kim just mentioned. Great opportunities for these cultural groups and other groups in our community to get out and perform in front of such a large crowd, large crowd. So we had some great feedback from them. And then finally, some of the feedback from our community that was received through our social channels. There's just a smattering here. The comments went on and on and it was fun to read those after the event when we were all in our post-event days, so. And then as we get into the numbers, it's great to know what these look like in addition to that positive feedback. So as you know, one of the long-term benefits we can gain from an event like this is the PR value that comes from something along these lines. Truthfully, we continue to get articles and mentions relating to this event. So I prepared this presentation in August and we have actually received some additional hits since then. So these numbers have gone up. These numbers have also been scrubbed to remove anything that did not include the Ogden part of the celebration because obviously there was a ton of coverage of the events up at Promontory as well. This is only Ogden area coverage or the event as a whole. So more than 2,000 articles, more than 1 billion people reached with an ad equivalency value of nearly $11 million.
Those are massive numbers.
That's just from the news articles alone. So this is a quick video we wanted to play. This is something that Union Pacific actually produced. But as we know how important it is to have these long-term strategic partnerships with some of these agencies, I thought it was worth you being able to see how they felt about the event.
Here in Ogden, with the help of Mayor Caldwell, the thousand volunteers that turned out to help, we had two STEAM celebrities.
Today, we are surrounded by the beauty of your mountains and the mammoth machines right over Union Pacific. 4014 and the 844.
Two iron horses go nose to nose recreating that day 150 years ago when two railroads met and created one transnational railroad.
I think most people recognize the history of the event and what it did for America. Times of civil war and then bringing us together as a nation. So that's why we often recognize and appreciate.
You know, today is 150 years in the making. It's the culmination of what we learned as schoolchildren in our history class, the connecting of east and west. It goes all the way back to 1862, President Abraham Lincoln signs into existence the Union Pacific Railroad.
Before the railroad, it was difficult for America to transfer goods and services and people. But after the railroad and 167,000 miles of track crisscrossed this country, all of a sudden, America changed. A big boy shows that when man's muscle cannot do the task, man's creativity and engineering and vision can create a machine that will accomplish the task. The railroad changed America. The railroad brought America to a new frontier. The railroad helped make this a better world.
It was just such a joy to be able to celebrate that with the tens of thousands of people that showed up. All of us cheering because we knew what it meant then and what it means today and what it's going to mean 150 years from now. So please join me in using today's modern state-of-the-art communication and share your location here today by using whatever social media channel you use and taking this moment hashtag done.
You know, that was a great morning. We were there and to watch those engines come in town, it was brisk and cold and steam flowing everywhere and that was just a fun event.
Thank you. Yeah, we welcomed just under 10,000 people to the STEAM meet site. And over the course of the three days of the event, we had about 100,000 people in our downtown core. These are some of the numbers from our hotel statistics. You had heard me talk for a long time leading up to the event that our hotels had been sold out for nearly a year. Our occupancy for the month was up 9.4% in downtown. Our average daily rates increased by about $9 per room across the board. And we had more than 110 new short-term rental units pop up from May of 2018 to May of 2019 and still had an increase in occupancy of 8%. When we look at who visited, this is based on Visa spend alone. We subscribe to a report called Visa View that shows the, only the Visa credit card spend. So from that information, you can see our top visitation markets, people coming from all over the country as well as all over the world. We had an additional $802,000 spent in May of this year than we did over last year. And to be honest, we're seeing a softening of our market. So most of our months have been flat or down over last year. To see that increase in May was great. And we, with all the additional cardholders with an average transaction of $128.52 per transaction. Just on Visa, yeah. So as I mentioned, that PR value has a long-term benefit. We think in addition to these numbers, you know, what comes out of this in the long-term for our community is the most important piece. That exposure and knowledge of our community, the pride in place that we feel like our locals felt. You know, our history isn't always top of mind anymore, I think, as we look at all the current opportunities that exist in our community. And so to really remember what the trains meant for our community and to have that pride in place of the grit and incredible town that we have because of that, the awareness of our destination for our visitors, the larger volunteer database that we were able to create. As mentioned, we had more than 1,000 volunteers help us out over the course of these three days. And Goal has been a great partner in that. But this was a great way to expand that database into people who weren't just interested in sports-related events. The long-term assets from the photos and videos that we were generated. And then obviously, there's nothing like being in the trenches with people for that long to build some great long-term relationships. So both locally within all the agencies that were involved as well as these state relationships that I mentioned. We just want to thank you, Weber County and Ogden City, the governmental agencies that trusted our teams to produce an event of this magnitude for our community as a whole. We appreciate your support and the trust you had in us and we're very proud of the experience that we created for this community. We couldn't have done what we did without everyone involved. And so to everyone, a huge thank you and we're looking forward to that next challenge, whatever it may be.
Commissioners, either of you care to comment here? Go ahead.
I'll jump in here, thank you. I remember those first days and when we talked with Ms. Tolliver and her team and asked her if she would lead on behalf of Weber County the efforts of this area because I thought of no one else who we could trust with that task that would do a better job. And it was absolutely magnificent. All my life growing up, my father worked at Fiocall, so I heard about Promontory every day since I was a little boy. And I was so proud of our area, all the volunteers. I was proud of the Goal Foundation for stretching so much further than what I even could imagine. There were so many little intricate things that happened and the boards and the committees were so big. I watched with interest as the Spike 150 from the state organization rolled out, but how Ogden led out with the events that surrounded this historic celebration. It was truly a wonderful, a wonderful thing to happen. I'm just grateful to be a part of it. You and Kim, your teams did a magnificent job partnering with the city. We felt really, really good. And I even think, and I was just teasing Commissioner Jenkins, but I even think that our hats made just a little bit of a difference. And so that's what I have to say about that.
Commissioner Forre?
Thank you. Yeah, again, magnificent event. Our history in Ogden, Weber County, obviously, is, goes back to the railroad days. Everybody probably has a relative or family member or friend that was involved with that. This was really the major event that connected our country, including transportation, business. We continue to see that today. I was just amazed at the showcase that we had for our railroad history here, the number of people, not, you showed the number of people from outside Utah, but I met a number of people outside the United States, which amazed me. Germany, Japan, other countries that came here for this event. And it was a great show. We appreciate what you did. Thank you very much.
And I'd like to say thanks too. You guys did a great job and we're proud of you. Well, you know, you represent us well and you make us proud to live here. Ogden and Weber County is a wonderful place, wonderful place. And when you look at our county, without us, Salt Lake would have never been what they are today. Everybody says Ogden.
That's true, Salt Lake.
A lot of that is true. Anyway, we thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Well, that's wonderful. All right, our next presentation is from the D'Chio Group. Sasha Clark, she, they do our information dispersment of the county. They cover, they, it started out about this big of a contract with her and now she does this much with us between our different departments and everything that happens. I was really opposed to that contract when I got elected and boy, was I proven wrong. Sasha, it's good to have you here today and we welcome you.
Thank you. No, I'm happy to be here and I know you were opposed. It was, you were pretty vocal about it. But I really appreciate that we have come full circle. I knew that once we started to work together, we would have a lot of fun. Well, thank you so much for letting me present to you today. Sarah and your tourism team, you guys are fantastic. They truly are the best in the state, probably one of the best in the country, I'd argue with anyone against that. And they helped make my job, along with the rest of the friends that I unfortunately have to my back, make my job so easy and so much fun. I don't have to dig for content. I can take two steps to my left, right, or behind and find it. And that's because everyone is working really hard and so passionate about what they do. All right, I have a presentation for you today. I've given presentations a few times and I'm always happy to do it to talk about what we are doing to communicate with the constituency. What you will see in this presentation is it is divided into two parts. What we have done in this past year and what we're very excited to do in this coming year. The ideas from this have come from our weekly meetings with the commissioners, our various meetings with the staff that are behind me and the community itself. So what we've done, in this past year, we started instituting project management software specifically for this client because you're our favorite and because there was a lot going on. We were able to tally that in the last year, we were involved in 1,083 different projects. These ranged everything from press management, graphic design, event management, videography, marketing and research. Some of the other projects, and I won't read through all of these, but I wanted to hit the highlights. For example, the quarterly business visits. We were able to do 24 visits last year with all three commissioners going and attending and being in their community, learning directly from business owners. And then being able to provide additional public relations. In fact, we were lucky enough to have Tim come along with us on one of those and enjoyed his presence there and the articles that followed that. Been involved in multiple legislative presentations, the regional economic development packages and that press conference that happened a few months ago, having almost every station there and multiple newspapers. Additionally, we have been involved in the Be Ready social media and press and crisis management. And then you'll notice a few others there also listed. As part of this, we do have our weekly meetings with commissioners and our multiple meetings and calls and emails with the various department heads and our partners such as Visit Ogden and others that are also in this audience. We have a bi-weekly newsletter that is often weekly because there is truly so much content. We are involved in crisis communications, multiple trainings on social media and press with the employees and various partners. We have also had frequent meetings with our local paper. And increasing transparency and the two-way communication commissioners, I know that this has been a huge lift from the years previously. The relationship that we've been able to build with the local paper has become a two-way street of transparency and respected communication. So thank you, Tim, for that. And in return, I'm expecting a good picture of the back of my head. So thank you. We have been involved in and posted over 2,628 times across our three platforms since May of 2017. You've seen a 76% increase in growth on your Facebook page, 403% Twitter growth increase on your Twitter page and a 229% increase on your Instagram page. What this really means is that you are leading the country. You were leading the country last year. I'm happy to let you know you are still in first place. In fact, you've gone further ahead. And you are continually killing your fellow counties, especially your larger counties. This speaks to your efforts and potential and really your true highlight in transparency and effectively communicating with your constituency. Because I think at the heart of what you do, you truly believe that you are doing everything you can to best help them. And we wanted to help you communicate that, but then also give you feedback from them. There have been many times in our meetings where I've come to you with an agenda item and I said, hey, this is being talked about multiple times. We need to address it. You guys have been more than happy to do so and I have to give you so much credit for that. The top three on the out-of-state counties, just so you're aware, the top three are the largest counties in the country. And they are not even close to you guys yet. You'll notice the Winning in Weber hashtag. This has been around for about a year. We're really happy. It has maintained its relevancy, which is fantastic. And the why, because it's trackable. We're able to track that software, track where our goals are and things like that. That tracking has resulted in 22.7 million impressions since November of 2018. We're 3,632 posts by 1,230 unique users. Email content. We have sent 41 mass emails to our list of 76,439 email addresses, resulting in a total of 3,130,309 total emails sent this year alone with a 23.4% open rate. Industry average open rate is around 12%. So we're happy with that content and it comes from the departments and community partners. We will continue to redesign and redevelop that newsletter as the year goes by. We stopped counting the hours we were spending because we were just having too much fun. It wasn't worth counting anymore. But we know that it is over 300 hours in graphic design, over 300 hours in video filming, over 200 hours in content writing and 300 hours in collaboration, as per outlined in the original contract.
That's a cool picture you had right there. Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, but it's called the.
Yep.
Cool.
These guys back here. They're very passionate about that one.
That's a great picture. Yeah, that's a great picture.
Yep, and that, again, just highlighting the beauty of Weber County. We're absolutely honored and have so much fun doing it. So, we are continuing the current scope of work, and this is what will be coming new this year. We have added a project manager and a drone pilot specifically to focus on the, we've been really focused on this downtown area. We would like to expand that focus to the more rural parts of Weber County and the beauty there and the tourism and the economic development. This account, this project manager will also be able to take on additional projects. They will basically be acting as a second me to our departments and our various elected officials. And then we will also be working on focusing, securing more proactive press for those various projects and individuals. I was able to, I got this video, I got these two drone videos yesterday, and I was really excited about them. So this first one is actually the fall leaves, and we were able to publish it a little bit later this morning, but it has already been submitted to shows like Good Morning America, The Today Show, our local papers and stations, so that they will also be able to, as Sarah mentioned, that PR reach is fantastic. We have a great county, we just need to tell literally everyone about it. I'm going to pause it there and have you guys tune into the Facebook page for the full video. Here is another one that I was able to get. Cliffhanger for you. This, again, focusing on outside of just the downtown area and what else Weber County has to offer. One of the reasons we felt that securing a drone contract was so valuable is because it's a great way to get really proactive public relations and press coverage from particularly the national stations. So this is areas of Western Weber. We're really excited about that, and it will help us better tell the story of what is actually happening in Weber County. I don't think people quite understand the magnitude of the beauty or the scope of what is available to them. So that is one of our larger goals as we look to focus instead of just more on the downtown area, the outside of it. Additionally, we will be highlighting our employees. We stumbled upon this by accident. Actually, Ricky Hatch sent us a picture of one of his staff winning an award, and we posted that picture, and it was just responded to enthusiastically by the community and on social media. So we decided, hey, if it worked, great for this one, let's do it for all of them. So we've decided to do a weekly employee highlight. There are hundreds of employees that work for Weber County, and I truly believe they are some of the best at what they do. This county is so lucky to have who they have. So we would like to highlight them a little bit more and shine a light on, and basically transparency, on the training they have, on the responsibilities they hold, and what they truly do for the people of this county. We will be receiving recommendations from the department heads and division directors, and happy to, we will start that immediately. They will be sent an email shortly to fill out a form, letting us know which employee they'd like us to highlight and answer a few questions, and we'll come out and take their picture, and we're really excited to kick this project off. Proposal and open house communication, there are quite a few initiatives and proposals on the ballot that will be coming up, and it is our job to communicate those as effectively as possible while still following the parameters of the law. There's quite a few projects involved in that and communicating to the different demographics. We live in an age right now where you have a demographic who does not really touch the paper, but we also live in a demographic where that's the only place where they receive news. So we are making sure that we're getting our message across multiple platforms at the same time, which makes our job really fun, but also very time-consuming. So we're looking forward to doing that, which, with each of the proposals and working with Ricky's office and others, to make sure that we comply with the laws. We are also going to be starting an Ask Us Anything Facebook Live. This will be held monthly. It will include all elected officials, division directors, and others. We will be sending out a schedule. Commissioners, thank you for your help in putting this together. You will also be featured in them. I know you're extremely excited to do so. So those will be happening, and we will be advertised in advance so that we can get questions from the public and then really put a face and a personality and people behind the Weber County logo and what runs government. We will also have a much larger focus on national press. We absolutely love our local press and love working with them, and we'll continue to do so. But we'd like to increase our scope by targeting national blogs and TV networks and newspapers, just to, again, spread the word that Weber County is a great place to live, it's a great place to work, and it's a great place to play. That's my presentation, commissioners. I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, Sasha, it's interesting. When I got elected, I was trying to kill you. And here, a year and a half later, you've doubled your business with us. Many of, you know, it's interesting, as a legislator, we were always respectful of the press, but we always kept them at an arm's length because we seemed to get in trouble with them all the time. And what we found out here is that, really, the press, what they print and what they report on is what they have knowledge of. And so you've empowered the paper here also by inviting them in, being transparent with them, knocking down these walls, and letting them have a good look at what we are and what we do. And I think that's been a very positive reaction to this whole thing as well. Anyway, commissioners, would either of you like to make a comment here?
Yeah, I think in the interest of full disclosure and to save Tim a phone call to me later this afternoon, I was also, it's been documented, Tim, thank you, that I was also opposed to some of the contracts that Weber County had at the time that we were running for office. As you probably will note, two or three of those have gone away. Sasha remains. And I think that the effort behind that, and at least in my opinion, was that I needed to justify the value to the taxpayers in this county that what we were receiving for this contract was a benefit and worth the dollars that the taxpayer was putting into this. And I think we've accomplished that, Sasha, you've accomplished that, really, in three different fields. Number one, we are more transparent with the public. The public knows what we're doing, they know what they're getting for their taxpayer dollars at any given time of the day. And I think that they can also have the ability, because of your social media, can get in and question what we're doing, which is great. We want the public to be able to question at any time our efforts, what we do, and how we're doing it. The other factor that I think you've hit very well is our employees. We want to showcase, we have the best employees in the state. We want to make sure that they understand what we're doing, we want to make sure that the team effort is appreciated. The efforts that you're going to put forth this next year shows that. And lastly, but certainly not least, is what we receive in economic development. As we all know, we just launched a major effort for economic development, the best thing that's taken place in this county for a number of years. We're getting statewide, regional recognition. This showcases what Weber County's about. We market ourselves, we show what the benefits are available to these employees, to the companies that want to relocate here or expand. We saw that recently, just this week, where our job growth has gone to 4.6%. If I'm not mistaken, number three in the country. I can say that a part of that success can be given back to you, Sasha, for what we receive. So, again, appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, you know, I've been writing some notes. You know, my experience is rather unique. I didn't criticize when we brought this contract on a while ago, because I remember back in 2001, we had a great PIO in Mike Caldwell, who represented us very well at the eye sheet during the Olympics. Commission, or Weber County has always had a public information officer. We just chose to take those county funds and use them a different way and message differently. We've always had great employees, we've had wonderful partners and a passionate community. I just wanted this story to be told, and you've done a great job doing it. We take now a proactive approach to the things that we do. That's important, because when we take a proactive approach, it instills trust, visitors are more encouraged to join us here, and then those visitors turn into economic development. It's just that simple. So this is a way for us to market our community, but doing some with just a pure wholesome approach that works every time. It's worked for decades and centuries, and so it's just simple. We just kept it simple, and I continue to support that decision we made a while ago, and thank you for having trust in it, commissioners. These numbers are absolutely wonderful, and to our city partners, our 15 city partners, we hope you positively feel their effect.
Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you both. I really appreciate it. This has been so much fun and absolute honor, and I'm excited to continue doing it.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, Sasha.
We appreciate it. It's fun to watch your company grow and you do new things, so it's good. Well, it's, those are a couple of great presentations. You know, you talk about the county and what's happening out there. This last Saturday, I walked to the top of Ben Lomond Peak. Well, I haven't been to the top of Ben Lomond Peak in 30 years, and it looked just like it did 30 years ago. But I'm telling you, what a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful view and county we have. What a great place.
Absolutely.
All right, next item are our consent items. Item one is request for approval to ratify warrants 2051 through 2061 and 443154 through 443399 in the amounts of $1,610,172. That's dated October 1st, 2019. Item number two is request for approval of warrants 2062 through 2082 and 443400 through 443591 in the amount of $1,349,403. Now, the reason there's two on there is because we didn't meet last week. Item three is approval of purchase orders in the amount of $379,079. Item four is request for approval of ACH payments to US Bank in the amount of $190,745. Item five is request for approval of minutes, held on September 24th, 2019. Item six, approval of Weber County Human Resource Policy 2-500. Item seven is request for approval of new business licenses. Item eight is a request for approval of surplus credit card processors and PIN pads to surplus them. Item nine is a request for approval to declare parcel 05112-0026 as surplus property. Well, we've been through all these previous to being here. Is there any comment?
No, except for, while it's been a little bit difficult, I appreciate the policy that Sarah Swan and her staff have come up with regarding FLSA. Thank you.
I agree with that. I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept items G. 1 through 9 as submitted with a comment.
Yes.
After we hear from Mr. Hatch.
That's true, Mr. Hatch.
Okay. And I'll second that after we hear from Mr. Hatch.
Okay, I have a motion to second. Ricky, do you want to take it?
You bet. Good morning. 34 purchase orders we issued this week for $379,000. Half of that amount, or $191,000, is for property management that will, primarily goes toward purchase of a boom lift. 15% or $57,000 was a payment for 911 Dispatch, and that's for software maintenance. 11% or $40,000 is for the conference center, and that was primarily for food and labor. And then two items at 5% or $20,000, one for the health department that purchased mostly vaccines, but some computer equipment, and the transfer station, which was primarily repairs to large, large equipment. As far as checks, we had two check runs. The first one that was the end of September was 255 checks for $1.6 million. A third of that amount, or $532,000, is for the transfer station, and that's for monthly disposal costs. 14% or $230,000 is escrow dispersment, and 5% or $83,000 was for elections, printing and postage related to the upcoming municipal elections. As far as the October 4th check run, we issued 211 checks for $1.3 million. 53% of that amount, or $719,000, is employee health insurance. 7% or $88,000 was for the attorney's office, and that's to cover an annual software license. And then 6% or $85,000 is for the jail, and that went primarily to food and mental health care for the inmates. That's all.
That's all. As you can see, Tim, in two weeks, that's almost $3 million. We go through a lot of money in this county. And of course, a fair amount of it is passed through, but still, we try to represent our constituency well here. So the motion's been made to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Those are approved. Next item, we're now going to the action items. Item one is discussion on Tourism Tax Advisory Board Recommendations. Mrs. Sarah Tolliver.
I guess. So now I'm here, wearing my hat of Chair of the Tourism Tax Advisory Board. The Tourism Tax Advisory Board is a legislatively mandated board that each county has to have in place to provide a recommendation to the county commission on the use of our tourism tax revenues, which encompass transient room tax, restaurant tax, and leased vehicle tax. So each year, we present this report to you, and in the past, there have been, we have not, our tourism taxes have not exceeded, revenues have not exceeded the expenses. But as we come up to the end of this year with the expiration of the conference center bond payment, we have some opportunities that exist. So the recommendation in the past has been given, and with the feedback provided back from the commission, the Culture Parks and Rec Department operates with 100% of its O and M being covered by these tourism tax revenues. The recommendation has also been in the past that any remaining revenues, that 50% be moved into the capital improvement fund to help with all the necessary capital improvements on our county facilities, as well as 50% going into a future projects fund to help us in the event of future development. So with that history, we present to you the 2020 recommendation, which you have seen. It doesn't vary much from previous years. One of the, the one you'll see on the top there is that there was a change this year as we went to reevaluate and make sure, every year, we look at 10-year projections and see where the revenues versus expenses are coming in. With the much-needed capital improvements going into the county facilities, those dollars were allocated. as we went to reevaluate and make sure, every year, we look at 10-year projections and see where the revenues versus expenses are coming in. With the much-needed capital improvements going into the county facilities, those dollars were allocated to the Culture Parks and Rec Department budget this year, which made their operating costs look like they had grown significantly, when really, they were for capital improvement projects. So our recommendation, our first recommendation from the Tourism Tax Advisory Board is that we keep those funds separate, so that we can really see what the O&M cost for the Culture Parks and Rec Department is, so we can make sure that we're growing at a level that makes sense, and it's not influenced by those capital improvement projects, since they tend to be so large in scale. Secondly, we continue with the recommendation that 100% of the O&M for the Culture Parks and Rec Department be funded through the TRCC tourism tax dollars, covering those departments you see there. That we recommend that funding of the Convention and Visitors Bureau be allocated at 70% of the transient room tax collection, that the Gold Foundation maintains its funding of $60,000 annually, that we increase our legacy grant fund, this is a granting program we administer, that it, that dollar amount increases by 10% each year, and again, that 50% of any remaining revenues go towards CIP projects, and 50% be allocated to a future projects fund. That last bullet there is just a consideration that any newer future departments that are added to the Culture Park and Rec portfolio be evaluated for the best funding mechanism. The dollars and the projections that we have put into place currently are for those departments that currently exist within the Culture Parks and Rec Department, and obviously, any additional departments that get added on require additional expenses to be associated with those. So just consideration of where those uses are coming from.
Commissioners, any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, question. Thanks, Sarah. So you're asking to move the TRT from what level, the 70%? In other words, where are you today on this, on the percentage?
For 2019, we are at, I should be prepared with a 64%, I believe.
Okay. And, and I understand there's some proposed legislation dealing with the TRT to change some of the recommendations. What's your opinion on those? Have you looked at that, those proposals? I understand that legislation is on the fast track, so can you tell me whether you're opposed to that or in favor?
I am opposed to it. I think that as we look at, it becomes very attractive for elected officials to use tax dollars that are generated not by their constituents, but by our visitors, because obviously, then you don't have to go to a tax increase or any kind of other uses to your constituency, and I understand and appreciate that. But as I've mentioned before, anytime that we deplete the tax revenue generated by our visitors into things that don't encourage additional visitation or the fund, you know, the pot to be refilled, so to speak, then we are just eliminating our opportunity to bring people into our community and generate that revenue overall. So as we are looking at, as, as that bill is being digested, and we're looking at changing that allocation, you know, a lot of these communities that are driving that, if you look at their, let me back up a little bit. Some of the communities that are driving that, it's because they are in areas where we have our national parks and other highly visited destinations, and they're feeling this overcrowding impact. But if you look at the annual visitation and the annual occupancy rates, there's still so much room to grow. Some, one of these counties, for example, runs at a 19% occupancy rate in the month of, months of January and February. So a reallocation of where the marketing and promotion is spent to fill those high need periods and support our private industry partners would be much more valuable in the long term than reducing overall promotion across the board. And we all know, as we enter into economic downturns or softenings, that that marketing dollar is ever more important, because we are competing with every other city, community, attraction, county, and state in the world to get those visitors to come to our community. And if we're not telling them why they should come here, they won't. They will go someplace else.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that at all, in marketing, I believe in very much. I, I'm in favor of obviously making sure that our O&M budgets are separated from capital improvement. Just in the last two or three days, or last week, I should say, we've had a major look at our capital improvements for the entire county, and actually looking at setting up budgets to deal with capital improvements, very much like the state does. So I think this is a worthwhile recommendation. Mr. Chair, I'm not prepared to take action on this until I investigate the legislation a little more and actually take a deeper dive into these numbers, what that means for the county, what that means for the residents in terms of taxation as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Harvey, you got any comments?
You know, I do. Ms. Tolliver represents a very well-seasoned and mature approach to what's happening within our community. I trust her. I think that she knows not just the area that she represents, which is for us, Ogden, Weaver County, but I think she has the region's efforts at work and, or at mind, and she also is very familiar with what happens in the five counties. I think this, at least to me, communicates where the Tourism Tax Advisory Board recommends for us to consider. I think it's great to have it in black and white, and I think as we continue through our tax process here over the next week or two, that we, we should use this as, as a place that we, we look to and make sure we're good. I've watched with interest two things over the last couple of decades, the proportion of monies spent on tourism and the tourism that comes from the result of the monies that come here. But it's a delicate balance for us, because we have to sell our community, but we have to have a community to sell, or we have to make sure that we take care of what we already have already in our, in our, for the capital improvement. So it's a delicate balance, but those would be my, those would be my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Sarah, I have one question for you. Where you have down here, 50%, of any remaining revenue be allocated to future project funds, so that we may begin saving for our future. Why should we give that to you to store or to?
I'm not, so this is where, yeah, no, you would hold on to it. So you have to, I'm, I'm not here as Sarah from Visit Ogden. I'm here as the Chair of the Tourism Tax Advisory Board on behalf of Weaver County. So, and I should have acknowledged in the beginning when I started, that the Tourism Tax Advisory Board is made up of a number of private industry hospitality partners, as well as the Culture Parks and Rec Department, and Jennifer Graham and Kim Bouchard are here representing two of those individual, two of those entities today. So the recommendation is on behalf of the Tourism Tax Advisory Board for the county. So I'm not suggesting you give them to Visit Ogden. I'm suggesting the county hold on to them for a future project.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. Very good. Thank you for your presentation today. We appreciate it. You bet.
Commissioners, just to let you know, this presentation satisfies the board's legal requirement to make a recommendation. There's no requirement for you to take action today, just something to consider as you approve your budget during the next couple of months.
Thank you. Miss Crockett, we appreciate that. All right, next item up is number two, request for, of a resolution of the County Commissioners of Weaver County regarding possible annexation of the Weaver Industrial Park. Caitlin Morgan and Cassidy Black. You're a couple of Weaver State students, right?
We are commissioners.
Very good. The time's yours.
Thank you. My name is Caitlin, along with my colleague and fellow student, Cassidy Black. We are presenting a non-binding resolution regarding the, the Harrisville support to de-annex the Weaver Industrial Park.
So you should have the resolution in front of you. It's fairly simple. Before I get into it, I'd just like to say, I haven't heard this much of a commission meeting since my favorite commissioner left to go work for the governor, but it's been fun to be back here, so thank you.
He's watching you on TV right now, so beware.
Um, well, thank you. So basically, this, we know that as the resolution lines out, it's fairly simple, but Harrisville City has been exploring expansion through proposals to annex the Weaver Industrial Park, and we are not in favor of that, and we really think that in order to uphold the common good and to support the economic development of the county, it'd be best to maintain the de-annexation of the Weaver Industrial Park as it was established almost 50 years ago. Society really can benefit from that as a whole, rather than just allowing one small part of society to, to benefit from that, and we'd like to maintain the enticing, enticing taxation climate as well for businesses to go there. And so with that, we'd like to ask for your support on this resolution.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Miss Crockett, I would like to ask you, this resolution has not been numbered.
So if you decide to pass it, our clerk auditor's office will assign a number for you to?
Has it been numbered?
Point of correction.
Okay. Ah, it has been numbered, resolution 56. So we could pass it right now if we wanted to?
Yes.
Good job, Fatima.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six, okay. I'm gonna put 56 right there.
Would either of you like to make a motion to do that?
I'd be happy to. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution of the County Commissioners of Weaver County regarding the possible annexation of the Weaver Industrial Park, presented by Ms. Morgan and Ms. Black today. Resolution number 56.
Very good. Do I have a second?
I'd second that with a comment, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for bringing this forward. You know, I think that if you look at the economic environment out there, and the reason this industrial park was set up, as you mentioned, 30 years ago, was to make it a safe haven, if you will, for taxation, encourage businesses to locate there, so they weren't under a particular jurisdiction, and, and looked at the opportunity for that municipality to raise taxes anytime that the municipality felt. I think also, if you talk to the surrounding cities, they also would probably, in fact, I know they have an issue with this, since a majority of this property was de-annexed from Pleasantview to Create. So I, again, thank you for bringing this forward. I guess it's gonna be up to Harrisville to hopefully make the right decision, and as we push forward on this economic development for northern Utah, this sends a bad message. This sends a message to our businesses that, hey, we come in and then you raise taxes on us. It's not a good thing. We want to have a stable environment that businesses can depend on for the future. Thank you.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, it's the resolution. There's a roll call vote, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Fatima.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Faur?
Aye.
Chair Jenkins?
Aye. So we probably ought to make a motion of where to send this.
Well, a motion or a recommendation?
Well, it's our, it's our, now we've adopted it. It's our resolution, no longer theirs.
Yeah, maybe they want to talk about it at the upcoming council. What would your, what would you like to do with this?
Um, yeah, we'd definitely like to look into that. We haven't made plans really as far, as far as that goes.
Well, let us know what your plans are, and if you, if you're not gonna do anything, then we will go ahead as a commission and send these letters to these cities that are around Harrisville and Far West and Pleasantview. But if you want to approach them and make a presentation, then we'll back off. So let us know what you'd like to do.
So we did reach out to the cities before this meeting, letting them know we were going to be proposing something along these lines, and I think it'd be appropriate either way for you to send that, would be fine with us, and let them know that it's been done, or we could do it on our end as well.
Very good. Well, then, Commissioners, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and take the initiative and have our folks send this letter on.
That, that would be great. That'd be great.
Very good. Thank you, ladies. We appreciate it.
Thank you for being here.
Efforts. You bet. All right, next up on our agenda is a request for approval of final reading on the ordinance setting a four-year limit on property tax refund. Mr. Cortland Erickson. And I want to thank Bob Hunter, being here today.
Good to see you.
Yeah, good seeing you. Former Commissioner.
Former Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. A couple of weeks ago, you approved the first reading of an ordinance. This one is before you, related to the time limit for property tax refunds. There was one modification that I proposed at that time, that you directed me to go ahead and make the change. That is in paragraph C of the new section 2-11-7 of the county code. Otherwise, this is exactly the same as what you approved two weeks ago. So we would respectfully present this to you for your consideration and approval.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Question.
Thank you for following up, and that, with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the final reading of the ordinance for the four-year limit on property tax refunds.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
It's an ordinance.
Yeah, this is ordinance number 21. Fatima?
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Faur?
Aye.
Chair Jenkins?
Aye. Very good. That's approved. Next item is request for approval of finding, final reading of an ordinance governing the preparation, review, enactment, and publication of ordinances. Cortland.
This was also before you, a couple of weeks ago, for first reading. There have been no changes made, so unless you have any questions, we present it to you for your consideration.
Very good.
Mr. Chair, you ready for motion?
Yes, I am.
I would move to approve the ordinance governing the preparation, review, enactment, and publication of ordinances presented by Mr. Erickson.
I'll second that.
Okay, that's ordinance number 22. Fatima?
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Faur?
Aye.
Chair Jenkins?
Aye. Very good. Next item is number five, request for approval, final reading of an ordinance governing grandma appeals. Cortland?
This one likewise was before you a couple of weeks ago for first reading. There have been no changes made, so I can answer any questions or present it to you for your consideration.
I have no questions, either of you?
No, motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 23 governing grandma. Fatima?
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Faur?
Aye.
Chair Jenkins?
Aye. Thank you. Cortland, we appreciate that. Oh, you're up one more time. Item six is approval of a county-wide policy governing the preparation, review, enactment, and publication of ordinances.
The ordinance that you just approved requires the commission to enact a policy to describe the details associated with the process of enacting or modifying an ordinance. This proposed policy does that. You've had a chance to review it. In short, it requires someone who proposes an ordinance to go to at least one county commissioner and get approval to proceed. Then there is a process that requires review by the county attorney's office and the county clerk auditor's office or the clerk's office, and then it is presented, if it goes through that process, it can be presented to the county commissioners. It talks about when two readings are required versus when it can be adopted on the first reading, and essentially outlines the process in detail. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. Otherwise, we would present this to you for your consideration.
Questions, Commissioner? Open for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we accept the approval for the county-wide policy governing the preparation, review, and enactment of a public, public ordinances.
Second.
Very good. This is not an ordinance, so we'll.
Sorry, my bad.
That's okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes. Thanks, Cortland. We appreciate that. Item seven, request for approval to sell surplus property parcels number 190370033 and 190370075 to Nielsen Homes. Sean Wilkinson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. We have two pieces of property that the county obtained back in 1985 and 1993 for road purposes. These are on 2200 North in the Plain City area. There's a small unincorporated island there. Nielsen Homes is developing a subdivision within the Plain City boundary, and they are looking at extending this portion of 2200 North and improving it, and they would like to purchase these parcels in order to facilitate that. There's no other use for these parcels except for future expansion of this road, and that is the reason why we are, we would like to sell them to Nielsen Homes at this time for that development.
Commissioners, any question? If you remember, we've had this, this. If you remember, we've had this, this presentation once before. This has to do with a small road section, right, out in Weber County. And it's only appropriate that this goes to this developer so he can develop the road. And he ends up connecting, it is part of a connection, he doesn't do it himself, but he ends up building a bridge between Plain City and Far West in there. And so it's appropriate to be done.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If you're entertaining motion?
I am. I will.
I'll move that we, we approve that lease agreement by, between Weber County, excuse me. Yeah, and, and Nielsen Homes for those two properties as mentioned.
Sell agreement?
Sell agreement?
Sorry, sell. Very good.
And I'll second that.
Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's done. That's a good one. Thank you, Sean. Takes a long time, but that's appropriate to be done. Next item is number nine, request for approval of contract binding between Weber County and Levitt Mortuary for the indigent cremation. Jason Horn.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm seeking approval of a contract binding between the county and Levitt's Mortuary for indigent cremation services. So the county issued an RFP several months ago in lieu of our current contract expiring. Procurement, the procurement process has been satisfied, and so I'm looking for approval.
Is this the same contract we've talked about the last week or so?
What we talked about the last week or so, this applies to it, but that was a policy that the county set.
Got it. Okay. So this is, this is the actual contract?
Correct. Between us and Levitt's.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, you ready for a motion?
I am.
Move to approve the contract binding between Weber County and Levitt's Mortuaries for indigent cremation.
Second. I have a motion and a second to that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. That's approved, Jason.
Thank you.
Item 10, request for approval of contract binding between Weber County and Wasatch Correctional Medical Services LLC to provide continued healthcare services for inmates of Weber County Jail. Mr. Reese, how are you?
I'm well. Here's South Commissioner.
Very good.
Thank you for your gentleman's time this morning. I'm here to present contract addendums for both the medical provider and for the pharmacy contract. I would like to thank, before I begin, thank Brian Barron with County Attorney's Office for getting these contracts written up and pushed through in a timely manner. What both of these contract addendums allow us to do is provide continued medical services and pharmacy services for the inmates that are housed at the Weber County Jail. Is there any questions I can answer for you?
Any questions, Commissioners? Now, you know, this, who would have ever thought that one of your biggest expenses out there would be medical? But you know, as it's turned out, that's what it's ended up being. And as we review these contracts and we review what you're doing out there, the public really needs to be aware that that's turned into be one of your biggest issues.
Absolutely.
And once in a while, you have somebody die at the jail, and everybody goes up, raises up an arm saying, why, why is this happening? And they just don't realize that when you get these, these people, when they're being committed, incarcerated, that they, you don't know what they've swallowed, what they've done, where they've been. And you're trying to make sure that they're healthy while they're there. And it's, it's a major undertaking. I'm just amazed by it. Anyway, all right, I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we, we approve the contract between Weber County and Wasatch Correctional Medical Services to provide continuing healthcare services for the inmates.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's passed. Next item is request for approval of contract binding between Weber County and Rose, Row Family Pharmacy to provide continue, to provide continuity of pharmaceutical services for the inmate population. So this is your pharmacist?
Yes, sir.
Any questions there, Commissioners?
Just, what's the agreement? Is it a one-year contract or what's?
So no, both of these contract agreements have come to their year-to-year expiration date. So now they are just month-to-month contracts.
Month-to-month.
While we continue to pursue a request for a proposal to expand our medical and pharmacy capabilities.
Yeah, that's important to note, because I know the sheriff in his budget proposals is looking very seriously at some other options for medical care, which I'd assume would be also pharmaceutical. So.
Yes, sir.
But the month is a good decision at this point.
I appreciate that.
This particular agreement allows the other party to terminate with or without cause by giving 30 days?
Oh, that's even better. Great.
And make a motion.
Yeah, I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Chair. I'd move to approve the contract between Weber County and Row Family Pharmacy to provide continuance of pharmaceutical services to the inmate population at Weber County.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You bet. Chair. Item 12, request for approval of contract binding between Weber County and TNT Auction for surplus property auction services. Mr. Kyle Nyland.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
So pretty excited about this contract. This has to do with our surplus property in the county. As you know, we have quite a bit of that. We surplus vehicles every year, equipment, desks, a whole array of different things. So what this contract is, is Sandy City actually put out an RFP and contracted with TNT Auction Services. And through the ordinances, we're able to piggyback that contract. So working with Cortland, he was able to draft up a contract here that, that leaves it pretty open for us. We, we can choose to use them, not use them, kind of at our disposal. But they're a really good company. They've been around for 20, 25 years, I think. They're located in Salt Lake. They, they offer auction services to the public so anybody's able to go and bid on property. What the contract outlines is that they're going to charge us 5.5% commission on whatever it is that they sell for us. We, we've used them in the past and had really good results. They offer a really good service. They come up and pick up our equipment and drop it off and, and really carry the sale from cradle to grave, if you will. So they offer a really good service for us and free up a lot of our time. So like I said, with, with what the contract says, we can use them exclusively, kind of at our, at our will. But also what I want to bring up too is, is working with purchasing, Jason, and the purchasing department. First, we're able to offer our surplus property to our employees, which we've got a lot of feedback from our employees that really like the program. We, we surplus it to them first and give our employees the opportunity to bid, only to employees first. So that program also works very, very well for us. And we've had a lot of, like I said, positive feedback from that. But this will subsidize that as well as get rid of bigger things that we, employees necessarily don't want. So looking for your approval for this contract, and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have as well.
Questions, Commissioners?
It's good work again, Kyle. You do good in what you do.
Thank you.
Motion?
I'll move that we, I'll, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we contract Weber County and TNT Auction for the surplus auction services.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve this. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes. Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you.
Number 13, request for approval of contract binding between Weber County. And Stern Dirt LLC for the Halloween Havoc Demolition Derby. Ashton Wilson.
Good morning. Yes, Duncan was not able to be here. This is an annual event that we host at the facility. It's historically been done in a lump sum. It's a big event. They come close to selling out the stadium, and we retain the concessions and the beer revenue from this agreement as well. So we would just like your permission to complete this contract.
Questions, Commissioners, on this contract?
No. Motion to approve.
I have a motion. Second. And just the great con, this is the same contract of the Dead or Demolition Derby for the fair this year. It does a wonderful job. It's a good production.
It is.
Very good. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 14 is approval of contract between Weber County and Utah Youth Rodeo Association for 2019-2020 Utah Youth Rodeo Association season. Ashton?
Yes, we had the original contract, and between when we sent it and received it back, there was a change in leadership. And so we needed to adjust that on the contract. It's just our typical agreement that we've had with the Utah Youth Association. They receive an hourly rate for them being a youth program. So we would just like your permission.
Questions?
Mr. Chair, this is a great event that started back in 1994 to allow kids the opportunity to participate in the big arenas. And so it's been wonderful. So with that, I'd make a motion that we approve this contract between Weber County and Utah Youth Rodeo.
I'd second that, Mr. Chair.
Very good. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
It's approved. Thanks, Ashton. Commissioner, comments? Either of you here to make a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would just like to recognize our own Chris Crockett. He, just this past week, ran the St. George Marathon, very beautiful marathon. I congratulate him for taking the effort to train and run that. And we appreciate that as citizens of Weber County, to see people take that initiative. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much. And I will run the Ogden Marathon one day.
I understand you had a personal best.
Yes, I did.
Time.
Thank you.
PR.
15 minutes.
Personal record.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Congratulations. Mr. Harvey, do you have anything?
Mr. Chair, I don't have anything, but I'd like to request a motion to, for, for a closed session to discuss pending a reasonable imminent litigation.
Okay. I have a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's a roll call.
Oh, it's a roll call. I'm sorry. Fatima, go ahead.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrar?
Aye.
Joe Jenkins?
Aye. That's okay. So we're going to close this meeting to talk about some legal problems, and then we'll, we'll be right back in to close it. Thank you.